Stand for the pledge of the flag.
Pledge of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is comments from the audience regarding items for future consideration. If anybody has anything, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address. Seeing none, we'll move to reports for A, the CERTS model presentation.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to introduce Alyssa Kattabou is our district behavior support specialist and her comrade in arms is Jen Townsend, CISA autism consultant. We just wanted to share a very brief overview of CERTS since we're implementing it in the district. And I just want to share one observation. As part of the DPI grant that we got to support implementation of the model, each of the teachers, and we're focusing on Edgerton, but it is a district implementation, each of the teachers were required to develop all the CERTS protocols for one student. They have found this model to be so effective that they decided they could not limit it to one student. So as a result, they are all doing, all of their students on the autism spectrum using this model this year, which has been an enormous amount of work, but I think it speaks to the power of the model. So I want to publicly thank you again for your support because none of this would be happening without it.
Hi, I'm Jen Townsend. I am a educational consultant for the southeastern region of Wisconsin. I've been asked by Whitnell to come in and support the social emotional learning of the students that we service here within this region. And so I'm excited to get an opportunity to present the information in front of you guys this evening. So thank you. So with that, Whitnell's mission kind of drove us to really look at a social and emotional standpoint for how do we service kids with social learning differences, including students with autism spectrum disorder. And with that mission, that highest quality of personalized education, when we look at our common core and we look at the components of those elements within that, they're academic driven, but what's hidden inside of them are social and emotional learning objectives. And so because it's such a personalized system here within Whitnell, we moved down the path of identifying and using a developmental progression model, which is called the CERTS framework. CERTS stands for social communication, emotional regulation, and transactional supports. And what that does is it really allows us to meet the child at their ability and it gives our educators a scope of where should I be working on and what should I be thinking about when it comes to this child's social communication ability? How do I help this child emotionally regulate in a manner that's sensitive to others? Because we all know we have those moments when we emotionally regulate in a manner that's not so sensitive to others and it's not socially accepted. And so it's important for us to make sure that we understand the developmental progression of that and our educators understand that and therefore our families can learn that as well and we can provide, again, that personalized opportunity for the students in Whitnell. So, social communication by definition is the spontaneous and functional communication and expression that an individual possesses in order to communicate with somebody else. Emotional regulation is that development in the ability to maintain an optimal level of arousal and through self-regulation and mutual regulation. Mutual regulation being how you regulate with other people, how you use other people's nonverbal and verbal feedback to regulate your state. And transactional supports, the really nice part about the CERTS model is its transactional supports. This is how do we as competent communication partners support an individual that has a social learning difference? And these transactional supports help us modify the environment, help us support the environment, and help us promote independence of the student. So we also have a developmental progression and a scope and sequence that we look at for the educators that provide services to these students. Now with that, there are four broad priorities that we look at within the CERTS model and this is where our focus has lied this year within the district. One of the big priorities is really enabling those environments for students with social learning differences to be able, to be a part of their least restrictive environment. The next piece is understanding the nature of a social learning difference, including autism spectrum disorder. Using and knowing that it is a neurological disability has helped the staff here within Whitnell take it from, take actions of these students from a different perspective, from a different lens, and knowing that at times it's their brain that's misfired or it's their brain that doesn't understand the social stimuli that's coming in. And it allows the staff to provide those supports in a manner that's sensitive to their neurology. And it's one of the first of its kind to allow us to look at it that way and really guide us in looking at that developmental progression so that we truly understand the way that the brain works. Another component and a huge priority is the educational planning piece. Again, going back to the district's mission of personalized learning experiences, educational planning, we have individualized education plans, those IEPs for students that qualify. However, there's not always the plan that goes into place that's shared across all disciplinary areas, across all content, and across the family as well, and providing a level of transparency in what we do. So being able to plan out the education that matches the student's individual plan that also aligns with what we do here in the state and in the region and the effective practices that go along with that. So it's not just teachers saying, I think this is a really good idea or I'm going to follow my gut. We're looking at some of those evidence-based practices and what makes the most sense to put in place based on the individualized plan, based on the neurology, and based on the environment that we're trying to provide the student their learning opportunities. And the last priority that we have in here is ongoing monitoring and fidelity of the program so that we can ensure success and build a sustainable system because we understand that teaching students is one priority, but having a higher quality of life and long-term predictors of success for these individuals is critical to our society as a whole. And so that's what this framework does allow us to see. One of the largest components of the CERTS model is an assessment piece to it, which goes through, again, like I've mentioned earlier, the developmental progression of how an individual does socially communicate and emotionally regulate themselves. And in this assessment piece, it's broken into a Likert scale where we use a 2-1-0 rating scale, had its inner rate of reliability points built throughout it. There's about 15 or 16 sectors where it comes in that allows for the data to be very valid within the assessment process. And it's a team-based approach. The parent, as well as the gen ed teacher, as well as an outside therapist, as well as an administrator, as well as a behavioral specialist, as well as a speech language pathologist, a principal, all get a chance to weigh in on this assessment. Because the way a child socially communicates may be different across people, across environments. And what a child looks like at home might be vastly different than what the child looks like in the school. And what the child looks like with their best friend might be very different than what they look like with just a classmate. And so this assessment allows us to go through a systematic way of doing that. And it's not just a broad standardized assessment. It's broken into three different areas based on the child's ability. So we're not sending any information or we're not asking information that we don't think that the child has the ability to grasp, to get, to learn from, and that we can build a comprehensive plan off of. I think that's been one of the biggest pieces of the plan is that it now then goes into the child's present level of performance. And we know that the present level of performance in a child's educational data drives their educational plan. So that assessment supports that as well. What we have done this year is we've taken a whole district approach where a lot of our staff have attended a training on the CERTS framework and using the CERTS model. And there are packets of it being implemented really well throughout the district. However, what we want it to do with being a recipient of the DPI mini-grant for supporting students with autism spectrum disorder, using evidence-based practices, we want it to take a focus on one site and do it really well at one site. So then that becomes a training site within our own district and that really helps support a sustainable system. So being able to create that opportunity and using the principal over there and having pieces of this be built into what he already has set in place in his building, such as staff development meetings, all of the information we share, he shares pieces of it. The principal is in attendance in, I would say 90%, I don't know exact data on that, but he has been in 90% to 95% of all of our meetings surrounding this framework. Maybe not the entire duration due to his schedule, but he's truly embraced it and made it a part of the climate. And you can see that in the mission of that building as well. And when I read this to you, the mission of Edgerton Elementary is to create a learning community that serves the unique academic, social, and emotional needs of its students and empower students to see themselves as successful learners, to ensure that every student meets their academic standards. With that piece there, we know that social and emotional development is critical to academic performance. And when we break it apart based on social emotional learning and based on Castle's research surrounding this, which is nationwide, and Castle's research will tell us, these are the five broad domains in which we want to address. And we know that these are positive predictors of long-term outcomes of success. And within these, there's a direct alignment to the CERTS model. And I'll share that with you guys. Under self-management and self-awareness, you have social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. That breaks down into the emotional regulation component. There's two types of regulation that we all possess, self-regulation and mutual regulation. And in that self-regulation, what Castle's work does show us is that self-management and self-awareness are key components in order to be successful long-term. And emotional regulation is one of the three, one of the broad domains within the CERTS model. But how do we teach that? And what CERTS does is it provides us the developmental progression of how to get to those smaller skills. So we're not just shooting at what we think is best for kids, rather we're using an assessment to drive our decision-making. Mutual regulation, again, falls underneath of emotional regulation within the CERTS framework, but then directly aligns with Castle's work under social awareness and relationship skills. And then we look at social communication. And in order to have responsible decision-making skills, we have to have competent social communicative abilities. And therefore, there's your direct alignment in the way that we can do this for social emotional well-being of all individuals. So the current work at Edgerton specifically, being an awarded site for the DPI mini-grant, is we have created monthly grant networking meetings where we meet to get together and we talk about one specific evidence-based practice that the building had decided would be most beneficial in some of the initiatives that they set out at the beginning of the year to do. We're focusing on the visual learning styles of individuals with social learning differences, including autism. And within those social, excuse me, those visual learning styles, we're looking at a lot of the visual supports that we know can support their learning. As auditory learning disappears, visual learning stays static and helping students become independent with managing those resources themselves. And it becoming a part of the system that they use at Edgerton, aligning with positive behavioral intervention supports as well for all learners. Developing a system for the school-wide use of those visual supports and then collaboration between departments, the school, and family. On our DPI mini-grant team, we do have a parent representative that participates, as well as a gen ed representative, as well as special ed administration, speech language pathologist, and an occupational therapist, a behavioral specialist, and myself. So it is a dynamic profile of individuals sitting around the table on a monthly basis, coming together to talk about how we're using visual supports and what's our protocol for using them, not just putting them in place to think it's going to solve what's going on or it's going to stop a disability from being present, rather it's going to support the child's emotional ability and social ability so that they can engage in a way that makes sense for their neurology. The other big piece with that is the way we're supporting Edgerton this year is through CERTS consultation. And with CERTS consultation, we're also looking at creating a sustainable system. And that means that we need to have networking meetings, we need to have monthly meetings to talk about what does it look like, how are we doing this? As Dennis said in the beginning, in his introduction of us, it was my hope coming in that each educator would pick a student and go through an entire cycle of, one-year cycle of using this process. The educators ethically felt that they could not do that and they felt that they needed to do with all of the students that presented social learning differences within their site. They've done a really nice job with that. They have felt the impact of doing it with all in your first year. When you're learning something and implementing something simultaneously, as you guys probably know in your own professions, that's really difficult to do. So they've taken the coaching really well, the consultation really well, and they see the benefit. Recently, some of the anecdotal I have information, a student recently had his educational planning meeting, his annual educational planning meeting, and they felt so good about the goals. The parent felt fantastic about the goals. She felt like she had input. The family had input into them. And the meeting went incredibly smooth for this child and for this family and for the school. And it really does represent the child's ability and where the child is. It didn't feel like a deficit model. It didn't feel like my child can't do this. It felt like my child can do this and this is how we're going to support him to reach this goal. So that's just some anecdotal information that's not in our presentation tonight. Developing those protocols has been really critical in having a dynamic multidisciplinary team approach because that has allowed all voices to be heard in the protocol development of what does this look like for me as a gen ed teacher? What does this look like for me as the administrator? And that's been incredibly helpful and that does create a sustainable opportunity where we can tweak a protocol and we're not just doing it differently because I think I should do it one way and somebody else thinks they should do it another way. There's a systematic approach to how we're going to do this and how we're going to use this and how we will sustain it. So conducting these assessments on a more regular basis, conducting assessments not only on our students, but also on us as teachers, as educators, making sure that we're providing the right interpersonal supports and the right learning supports based on the child's abilities and their environment. So I will leave you guys with this last piece of data here in knowing that when we can support a child, social and emotional development and social emotional skills, we will see an 11% increase in academic performance. And this is nationwide data research. The researchers are here quoted in perenns. And social emotional learning, we all know from our own personal experiences affects how we perform in our day-to-day activities. But for somebody to have a social learning difference and a deficit and maybe a disability in this area, it's even more important that we're using a developmental progression to teach the right skills and support the right skills. And that's what the CERTS model is doing for us. So I want to thank you guys for your time and I don't know if I should open it to questions.
Questions from the board? Anybody want to ask a question?
This model can be used for any age child?
Correct.
Or is it just, we just chose to implement it at Edgerton?
We chose to implement it at Edgerton based on the mission statement of the building and based on being the recipient of the DPI mini-grant. But yes, it goes all the way up and I've done the assessment on myself and you can do it on yourself because it does talk about how you emotionally regulate. And I think that those are key components. But yes, it goes through the entire developmental progression of us as a society.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Question? Go ahead, Luanne.
Just a comment. I think it's an excellent model. It could work for all students. It really could. So I'm really proud of our staff for deciding to take on all of our students. And, you know, we need to continue to move in this direction where we sort of modify the plan for each student and then ensure that they're successful. I loved what you said about, it's not a model where we say we can't do this, you know, moving to how can we? And then committing the resources, and that's what we're here to do, commit the resources to make that happen for every child regardless of their ability. So I think it's a great model. And I've heard a lot in some of my other involvements about social emotional learning. And there's a lot of conversation even in Milwaukee about, you know, whether you should be looking at task scores or social emotional learning. We get some debates on a committee I was on last year about that. And there's somewhat conflict around how to measure that. But the castle was one of the resources that we used on that as well. So I'm becoming more aware of how important this is to, for all of our kids, not just some. Well, thank you.
Thank you for that comment and the support.
You mentioned that normally you take one student and yet we chose to take a group. How many were actually involved?
There are 10 students currently.
Okay. And when can we expect to see results from those 10?
We have results already put into their educational plans.
Okay.
And annually, we will be updating their current assessments. So it'll be based around their IEP cycle, their annual IEP.
So that's kind of end of the year, you kind of...
I think it's more sporadic throughout the next year, but you'll see concrete data supporting this throughout the next school year.
So would you say we're on track to hit this 11% gain in academic performance?
I would say we're well on our way because we have some students that were not able to access the gen ed curriculum who are now within the gen ed classrooms receiving their instruction like their peers. Not all the time, but they're doing it more and more in the manner that they can regulate themselves to accept the instruction in the way that we're teaching it.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Jennifer.
Just as a school note, I think it's important to note that one of the kind of unanticipated consequences is that because staff is feeling so much more secure with the model in place, we're looking at transitioning to students that have been placed in off-campus programs for autism specifically to be transitioned back in the next year. So that's a huge benefit. It certainly has a big physical impact and I appreciate the work that they've done to get us where we are.
Thank you guys for...
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda are the policy changes. Who's going to take the first readings on these? When are you taking this or what are we doing?
Me. Okay. I gotta get over to that page here for a second. The first one was actually, the board members that are on the committee actually worked this one. We worked all the ones there in the 100. Too many pages here. All right. We gave some leeway for this first one to allow the orientation to happen and not box ourselves in to... Kathy, do you remember what the wording was prior?
The prior wording was just, it did say following the spring election and it wasn't very clear and concise. And we wanted more of a framework so that, you know, you knew when you were going to do that orientation with the new members. And so the committee thought that within 60 days was a good framework to work within.
Yep. And then access to the school board policies and procedures. Luanne had talked about updating the folder of information. Is that correct?
The main thing here is it's, you're not going to get, we're not going to give them a policy manual anymore.
Yeah.
We're just going to point them in the direction of where it is online. That was the main change there.
And to include the district goals as well as the superintendent's.
Right, right. That would just be an inclusive policy then.
Yeah, I mean, our PAC highlighted the changes. So I think it's...
Right.
And then the second one, Dennis.
Before we jump to the next one, any discussion on the new board member orientation? Any comments or questions on that before we jump ahead?
One comment, I just hope that it's well within the 60 days because I think a board member being on the board for 60 days without having an orientation is going to really put them at a disadvantage to sit here for two months without really knowing what's going on. So I would hope that that would happen sooner.
Okay. Okay, if no other questions or comments on that, let's move to first reading of policy 342.8, section 504 of the Rehab Act of 1973.
Can I back up for just a second? If I remember right on that timing thing, it's 30 days before you're seated anyway just to file it, isn't it? If we understood that correct. So that really did give you 30 days to get something done. I think it's a pretty tight time for you.
The time the election is until we actually...
Right, just clarification on that. So it isn't 60 days.
It is 4 weeks, yeah.
Right, it isn't 60 days since the time they're seated. I just want to go. I think it's still good. Okay, sorry.
Leaving us, Dennis? 504 is up next.
Well, this was brought to us because we did not have this policy.
Right.
And it was suggested from when we purchased the WSAB review that we do this. And it's pretty much, and Dennis can speak to it, but it's pretty much all form except for we customize it with Whitnell's names in there. You have anything to say about this one, Dennis?
504?
Yeah.
Other than it really needed to be updated, the policy hadn't reflected the ADA amendments from 2009. So in the fall of 2012, we did an in-service for all the 504 coordinators, updated all the forms, and put a manual together that reflects those changes.
Any questions or comments on this item? If not, let's move to first reading of policy 363.5 on the assisted technology. Who's taking it?
Eric, did you submit it?
Technology, and right away I look at Eric.
No, this is a 504. This is for students with disabilities.
Oh, it does once in a while.
Okay.
This was just basically an update based on the possible recommendations to make the language more specific. And also, we kept it as opposed to special ed to students with special needs because it could also cover ELL or possibly other situations that might be outside of special ed.
So the current policy is being completely stricken as it says and the new one is in place.
Okay. I didn't have any questions. Anybody else have any questions or issues on this one? Okay, if not, first reading of policy 723.4 on emergency school closings. Not that we had any of those this past winter.
Lowell, you worked on this?
With Joel. But basically, it's a minor change where it says a decision shall be reached no later than 1:30 PM. You don't, you can't predict when pipe's going to break or something happens where we have to, you know, leave the building. So we just said as soon as possible. And it's really important to always do it as soon as possible because the parents want to know, unless it's 4:30 in the morning, they don't always appreciate those calls. But they do like to know as soon as possible.
Did you take home, Mike? Slept right through it?
Then you stopped making coffee.
It was just to give our superintendent and administration a leeway and not box them into that 1:30 time because it, like Lowell said, it could happen at different times of the day.
Okay.
I got that call four times.
Four times?
It's because you're special.
Good to meet kids, Mike.
Actually, but it refers to the activity.
Communications plan, later.
If there's activities going on that day, say, right, if we close school...
Right.
And all of a sudden, it gets nice out or the storm passes or it gets up to 20 degrees. Dr. Holtz would have the latitude.
See, and for those activities, typically we like to just close them down. But a lot of those, I mean, the kids are juniors and seniors are driving to them, you know, assuming it's not bad driving conditions, you know, that there's, we don't have to worry about them walking when it's 10 degrees out or something like that because they probably won't. But...
Okay. Just point of clarification, by striking no later 1:30 and adding as soon as possible actually pertains to the activity and not necessarily the closing of schools. So I'm fine with that.
It gives the athletic record time to make some calls and stuff to the other teams.
Any other comments or questions on that?
I just always thought that the activities were canceled when school was closed. So I was surprised to see that, that there's an option of having the activities in the evening, which doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Well, especially if you look at that third paragraph right underneath the "as soon as possible," then it says, "If school is canceled due to inclement weather during the school day, all interscholastic and all other activities of any kind shall be canceled."
Is that the WIAA regulation that if the school is closed, you cannot hold activity that evening?
Hmm.
No?
Nope.
Lowell, you made a good point there, Stephanie.
Nancy brought it up too.
Nancy. It is very conflicting.
That's incompatible.
I thought we had, we had fixed that because it, we went with the part that went from the handbook. The handbook says, brings that top part down and gives us.
Well, when is, when is the next board meeting?
We have, we have our.
Two weeks from today.
Um, 26.
Yeah, two weeks from today.
And we are meeting prior to that?
24.
And the next board meeting is the 24th, so.
Let's put this on the agenda and relook at this.
Okay.
You have a policy meeting prior to that?
Yes.
Okay. So you're saying point on your agenda for the policy.
Yeah, what we'll have to do is, the next policy committee is after 24th, it's on the 26th.
Okay, 26.
So we'll have to handle this until April.
Hopefully, we don't have any more inclement weather days.
I remember, this is due to inclement weather during the school day. In other words, I, not when I make, in the, if I make the call before school starts, there is still an option. During the school day, if it's noon and I say, this is terrible, everybody's going home, that's when it's, it's an automatic.
But I still wonder why it would be an option to have activities in the evening if you have school calls.
Well, big changes happen in three, four hours. And you don't want kids traveling in the morning and then to tell parents, why don't you have them here at 1 o'clock because it's gonna be nice out. It's not gonna work. However, if it's, you know it's gonna be nice at 1, 1:30, there's no reason why you couldn't have the activities as scheduled if it happens. It just gives you the flexibility.
And I also, I wonder what kind of message that sounds. Are we more concerned about after-school activities or school activities?
Well.
And if a child is sick, that they don't attend school, they're not supposed to be, and they feel better, they're not supposed to be attending after-school activities if they call them sick to the school day?
No, we're saying, I'm not making a value comparison between the two. What I'm saying is if it's a, the weather is so bad, you know it's gonna be 30 below and we have a wind chill advisory up till noon, and then it's gonna switch and it's gonna, there's no more below zero weather advisory, it's back up into the highs of 1 and 2 where it's safe for kids to travel. There is no reason to cancel the basketball game that's supposed to happen that night because parents are gonna bring their kids, kids are, you know. So it's not a, it's really, we wouldn't do a value judgment between the two because one obviously outweighs the other, you know.
Well, why don't we just have the policy committee relook at that and then bring it back?
What would you want, what would you want in it? Because there's no point necessarily.
That's a policy committee.
No, what, what do you want us to look at? Because I think, I still think it's fine because it's giving administration flexibility. Are you saying you don't want that in there?
There's a conflict between paragraph two and paragraph three.
No, no, they're two different. They're two different, no, they're not. One is if school is closed during, once the kids are in school and then they closed it, the third paragraph is if school was canceled, they weren't even there. Those are two different issues. There's no conflict there.
Yeah, the third one, the third paragraph, Bernie, if.
During the, you have, during the school day, that's the key.
So.
That's the key phrase.
This really is okay unless you disagree that we should have anything, if school's closed, are you, you know, are you saying that we should, by policy, automatically cancel interscholastic activities? If the board feels that way, then we change this policy. Otherwise, the policy is just giving administration more flexibility to decide that based on what they're seeing happen. That's all, Bernie. So that's what I mean, why take, if you want to take it back to the committee and give us direction, you're really not supporting the policy. And what, would you like to see us change?
Well, we need to be more specific between closed and canceled.
I don't think we need to be, we just need to understand it.
This is the one that's been in place for a long time. So, but if, you know, if you think we can come up with something more easily understood, we can give it a shot.
Then I'd like to see another change to have the administration have the flexibility to call staff in and not students. Because when we had these four days of cold weather, the staff could have come in, had their training time or whatever, collaboration time or whatever, and then taken one of those days that we had set aside and used that as a regular school day.
Should that be?
It's closed for the kids. It's closed for the kids because it's too cold to stand out and wait for a school bus or walk to work, whatever. Staff drive to work. So I don't know that it always has to be closed for staff.
Do you think that should be under this policy or a new policy?
Well, it specifically says that only the people that report are the custodians and if they can come to work, why can't other people come to work?
Uh huh. Well, taken.
Okay. So now I know what you want. Take a look at that. And we'll maybe have to look at other policies if it's somewhere. And we'll look at changing the language to make it clear. Okay.
I mean, you're almost there, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, let's see, next item is Doug. I think you've got them all, won't you?
Yes, we lumped them together for that purpose. Would make a brief comment about each of them and then see if anybody has any questions. I reported to the finance committee last week on the status of this year's budget, which is tracking very closely to last year's budget in terms of percentages of revenues received and expenditures made. We'll get back on our cycle of quarterly reporting, excuse me, after the end of this month. And we'll have a better idea where we are at that time with three quarters of the year under our belt. Presented the audit report along with the responses to some of the items raised by the auditors, even though I had worked with individuals who have primary responsibility for some of those items. Earlier in the year, we're having a meeting this week just to make sure that we're, where we need to be in terms of corrective actions. Also had a memo in there that was an update on the health insurance plan to date. I think that all in all, the transition to the high deductible plan along with the health savings account went pretty well. And we still, though, need to be working to lower the actuarial value of our plan. It's approximately 94% right now. It needs to be below 90. So we're out of that platinum status as they're terming it. So that we're not having to pay any of the penalties and fines that go with having the high, very high value plans. So we will be presenting some ideas to you next month for ways that we can help drive down our costs and try and get that actuarial value down. So be more coming on that later. That's all I have to say.
The, for period ending January 31st, 2013, is that meant to be 14?
No, there's two pages there. I did 13 and 14.
Oh, they're almost identical. Wow. Percent remaining is that close?
Oh, and I forgot to mention one thing on the, on the audit report. Last year, we ended the year with a surplus of revenue over expenditures, which becomes an increase in the fund balance of about $17,000, which is pretty tight. So, but we did not lose money last year.
So we are addressing the, I don't wanna say infractions, but.
Yes. The meeting this week will actually be a follow-up to ones I had earlier in the year, just so I can see that we're right where we need to be. Because the main thing we don't wanna have is audit issues repeated.
It's noisy down here.
No, we're good.
Anyone down here, questions for Doug? Okay, hearing none. We can go to new business. Proposal rollout, the WHS one-to-one program.
Good evening, everybody. Eric Grant, educational tech director for the district with a proposal to modify what we had intended on doing for the rollout of our mobile computing initiative specific to the high school. So initially, our plan, the original plan, was to roll this out in two segments. Next year would have gone out to the freshmen and the sophomores. And then we would have rolled out in the second year to the juniors and the seniors. So we've been planning since early September for next year's rollout already. Takes us about a year of lead time to get going on this and get everything ready to go. And that included meetings with the high school department chairs, input from the high school teachers. We ran a student pilot with about 80 students involved in that. One item was really, really clear very quickly, that a two-year rollout for us here at Whitnall would not work. For some districts, it has. But we have a problem where we have a lot of cross-grade level classes, especially at the sophomore and junior level, where upper and lower classmen are mixed. That presents us with a problem. If I'm a teacher, I'm in the middle of a lesson plan, now I have a problem maintaining what we would call curricular consistency. My lesson plan becomes difficult within a classroom because I now have a situation of haves and have-nots. Some of the students have the one-to-one technology, we're embedding it into the curriculum, and I have a bunch of my students that don't. Quite simply, we're asking the board to allow us to modify the plan. We would roll everything out in a single year next year. Now, that also presents a problem because the annual budget will not bear that cost out. And we know that. It's going to add right around $155,000 to the program budget next year. It's a one-time cost. Now, to be clear, that's money we would have spent the following year anyway. We're just rolling it down into next year's budget. But we also need you to, you know, allow us as administration to be a little bit creative with the funding and that more likely a lease purchase. Spread that out through a multi-year lease purchase. But again, it's gonna impact next year's budget. Questions?
Just, you're looking for support, and I totally support that.
I don't, but before I.
We're not boarding on it.
Right. I'm just saying, well, it's an action item. And so, and here you say, you say it, latitude and seeking alternative ways to finance the single-year old, a multi-year lease or a similar financial plan.
Yeah.
What is a multi-year lease? What, what did we do with? We purchased the middle schools outright.
Yeah, we did. We purchased the middle schools outright in the single year. And the problem is we can't do all four years of the high school in a single shot. Adding that 155, it just doesn't make sense. You wanted to jump in, Dr. Holtz?
Yeah, but you can do, I mean, the leases can be two-year leases, three-year leases, four-year leases. If we were gonna spend the 155,000 irregardless the following year, basically, we'd, it won't impact the budget quite as much as it sounds because we'll actually be paying for it that second year. It's just we're, we're going, we're entering into the agreement this year, getting the stuff, spreading the costs out over two years so it'll actually balance itself out. Doug's a lot better at the leasing stuff than I am, but.
But is there additional cost for leasing?
It's a dollar buyout at the end of the lease, depending on how we finance it. There's a bunch of options. We'd probably end up going through somebody like Coke Financial, something like that, Apple's own financial company to do that. We just got done with a, we had a four-year lease out that went back several years. We did the large laptop purchase and everything because we wanted to spread that out over time. And at the end of it, we pay a dollar and we own the equipment coming off the lease.
But what is, what is, they don't just lease stuff, they're, they're in to make money. So what is the cost of leasing as opposed to outright buying?
It actually doesn't, if we do a two-year lease, it doesn't cost us any more other than a dollar. They don't jack up the price of equipment.
Well, you make a payment every month.
Yeah.
They generally have some rate of interest, though, that is figured into a lease, just like if you're leasing a car. We don't know what that is until we go to market, but.
It's an implied rate. They, they have a factor. But Quinn, your point is, well taken, which is, let's look at what the lease plans are, all right, and, and let's see who would bid on it. We'll put it out for RFP. And here, this is it from Apple, this is it from XYZ, Bankers Bank out of Madison would love to get into the lease program for schools and municipalities. I can have you, you know, some of them there contact you. And we'll look at three alternatives or so as what they would do. I mean, and who's got the best deal? As simple as that.
When I, when I, I'm for the iPad initiative, but the spending of the money that we don't have, I'm not for. I think we need to cut other places to afford this. Just like a personal finance, that something comes up, right, I gotta have my car fixed. But then I gotta, I gotta not go out on Friday night in order to help start paying for, to get my car fixed. But I don't see that here. I see spending it, but I don't see anywhere saving it to try and pay for it. That, that's my problem.
So you're not asking for it out of this budget. You're asking for it as $155,000 in addition to what you will be budgeting from the tech plan.
Correct.
So to Quinn's point, there may be money in the budget that we can find in the budget to cover some of this. We don't know yet because it's next year's budget.
And the problem is, is that we need, you know, with a program this big, we need that much lead time. You know, and if we let this go too long, we get too far down the planning road and we can't execute on it unless I have a board decision to allow a rollout in a single year.
So you do need a board. You do need a board decision.
Even things, you know, as a lease or anything to most of these companies, now I have not been part of a lease here at Whitnall, but the ones I did with MPS, they actually require the board to sign off on. The board president must, is initiate, not only superintendent, business manager, it's not some just administration can go do on their own. Typically, a board president must sign off on that type of lease that big, so.
So when would you have to order these?
Ordering's not the problem. Ordering comes in after the budget roll, I mean, we do that in July. It's always first week of July, get them in, come in here because it takes us that long to prep. It's more of anything is, you know, when we look at training of the staff and everything else. You know, if we do a single-year rollout, that means we're planning training the entire staff. And we have to start planning that now and start putting that all into place and everything. We handle a lot of the training in-house, but not all of it. And scheduling people during the summer, when it's very popular to do that kind of stuff, gets difficult. You know, and so that's why I'm, I'm watching days from my point of view tick by and getting nervous. You know, last year, we knew the budget would bear it by this point. We already had it in the tech plan. We were well down the planning road at this point, you know. And so I know, you know, this is something that we'd like to bring back to the board. We have some options for everybody for a vote at the next meeting. So we, you know, either yes, we're moving ahead full steam or no, we're not.
And tonight is the, the presentation part. We were gonna bring it back for the vote on the, today's the 10th, so it'll be the 24th.
Well, we need more information. We don't, I don't even know, you know, it adds 155,000 to what? What's the total cost of all this equipment? How many units are there? What's the total cost? All right, that, that's one. Two, all right, so we know, okay, it adds 155 to the next year's budget. So what's the total cost of the equipment? And then let's compare lease versus buy as an option. If, if lease becomes the more attractive option, one of three bids or something, we may not have the pressure on the budget because those payments are going to be spread over 12 months, 36 months, whatever the case may be. So you just fund it accordingly. So, and with, with how quickly technology advances, this becomes obsolete, you know, very quickly. So we, we need, I'll be glad to work with you and help you get some bids on the lease option. But, you know, we, we need to know total cost of the equipment and then compare it to a lease option. it to a lease option. I don't think you'll get any pushback that the one-to-one initiative, we, you know, that train has left the station and we're going to continue down that path, so... And we go from laptops to gym floors. Where's the worker here? Where's the worker?
We had a good day today with no school. I do like the full days off because it gives us a full day to do maintenance in districts. That is nice. I'm really here just to take questions about the work. It's really just a point of order to get a proposal this high through the board because it exceeds the 15,000 hour threshold, and because these flooring companies are doing so many schools over the summer, I really want my schedule, the Whitnall schedule that works with athletics, to get approved early so that I can get it in on the calendar, so...
I just have one question. Did you budget for this?
It is going to be included in next year's budget.
Next year's budget.
Yes, 2014-15 budget, yep. The work will be done in July.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna, we typically, since I've been here, we take the first two weeks of July, and we just kind of shut down the pool in athletic areas, we go through clean, do some of that screening and recoating of gym floors. This year, we want to take it and actually take that one gym floor all the way down. And so that's about a week, and then depending on humidity, dry times, you know, could be a little bit longer, but I'm trying to get it done. Plus, it's going to give us some new lines in the gym, which we need, and it'll take some of that water damage that happened before we did the stormwater project out, you know, some of that cupping in the floor, so we probably could stretch it out 15, 16 years, but it's really, I think we're, it's time to get this done, and then we'll move, like I said in the, in the memo, to the old gym, get that done, and then middle school gym. So throughout the next, you know, three or four years, we'll be painting the new gyms, you know, updating, you know, the flooring look, and, you know, just keeping the safety items, you know, on the reoccurring budget, so...
Why didn't it come through finance first?
This, this is something that's going to be going in my operating budget, and so it's something that I can get, if, if it's improved, you know, by the end of the month, I can account for it in my operating budget, and then that goes forward. It's one of my projects for summer.
And this 22,000 is just for the north gym?
Correct.
And that's the newer gym?
Yes. That gym's got a little bit more cupping in the floor, and the other gym is a little bit more seasoned, you know, being an older gym floor, it's got a lot of coats of finish on it. This will actually be the first drum sanding of that floor since it was installed in 1999, so...
Isn't there a lot of firms that do this? I mean, only having two bidders seems...
There's a couple, but like I, I put in there, I really went to my colleagues at Metro Buildings and Grounds in Wasbourn and wanted to work with flooring contractors that have done a lot of these floors. They know that the paint that they're going to put down isn't going to come up with different finishes, and they just have an excellent track record. And something as important as our gym floors, I did not want to take a chance. You really only get one shot to drum sand it and stripe it, so those are the two vendors that I listed in, in the proposal, I feel are a win-win, you know, contractor for the, for the school district. We've worked with other gym, gym flooring companies in screening and recoating ever since I've been here, and some just, you know, they, they hire summer help and they give them a quick training, and they come in and screen and coat the floors, and it doesn't always look the greatest, so I, I just didn't want to take a chance with our gym floor.
Okay, other questions?
And they're just, as a final point, they're going to be working with Scott Bruning, the athletic director, to maybe get a new logo on the floor, so, you know, the gym will have a new look and feel to it, and that, and that expense is in, is in the proposal. We're not doing a ton, you know, we're going to get four-color pictures or anything like that on the floor, but it's just going to be a different logo, a little bit more updated to match the stadium.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm excited, it's going to be a next project.
Other questions? I guess you got the next, oh, Eric's got this one.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
So bringing in the initial proposal to the board for our new phone system and replacement of our current public address systems. In complete irony, Chris Kopp apologizes for not being here doing your videotaping tonight as he is down because we have no connection to that Hills Corners Elementary at this time, and they have no phones. That happened about two hours ago. So they're working feverishly trying to get that up and running right now. I think somebody's playing a game with me as I'm supposed to be up here presenting about that very thing. So, quick little background on this, it's part of the technology plan that we approved two years ago as a district. At the time, Matt Karshina had come up at that time, and had talked about PA system replacements. This initially was just a phone system replacement, and at the board's request, we were asked to merge the two projects to present money savings and to also present a single unified system. Our current phone system's failing, hasn't been produced in 14 years, and the company's been out of business for eight. That means parts are getting very, very hard to come by when something breaks. We're generally calling down to the Backwoods of Florida, I don't even know where he finds that stuff, but to, to find phones when they break. Our PA systems, HCE and EES are currently failing as well. We're having multiple calls a year for maintenance on those that we shouldn't be having. The WMS one is also outdated. The only one that's 100% functional is the high school right now. Couple goals for this, single unified system for both phone and PA across the district. And we always talk about, you know, we hope for the best here at Whitnall for every person in this district, but sometimes like this, we got to plan for the worst. And so if that horrible crisis situation would happen in a system like this right now, you know, Dr. Holt needs to put our entire district into a code red and lock us down, we can't do that immediately right now. Current system would take at least five phone calls to do that, and you better hope that somebody picks up on the other end. This will allow us to do it. He'll have a magic code, he punches it in, and he could literally public address the entire district at one time for those people, you know, administration that would handle that type of situation. So it's kind of our one single stop for our safety and emergency communications. We had six initial vendors that took the RFP, three backed out shortly thereafter. Because we were merging, we wanted that unified system, they said they did not have the capabilities to handle that. I'm actually happy that they did that, they didn't waste our time any longer and that they backed out when they did. Three vendors turned in bids, they were due on February 14th, and then we narrowed that down to two finalists, and those two finalists presented to Whitnall staff. The two finalists were ESG and TDS. There are some employees and representatives here from TDS tonight if you have any questions for them. So some major parts of the project. The largest part is the actual phone and PA system contract. That's the biggest part of this. But we at Whitnall internally, we're acting as our own general contractor for this, try to save some money, and also one of the big ones was, we didn't want anybody touching our network. Our network is rock solid. If it isn't broke, don't fix it, all right? So we don't want anybody messing around with that. We need to connect Edgerton. Right now, we have a weak link in our network. We actually broadcast all of our network signal over to Edgerton wirelessly. That's not real reliable, and so we want to hardwire to them. We have some internal wiring, that's actually the smallest part of the project. We do have to put some wires in the walls in a few places yet for some phones. They aren't currently wired, and so that's kind of the tiniest part of the project. Those are things that are going to go along with the big contract for the phone and PA system. The recommendation that we're bringing to the board is that we contract with TDS for the phone and PA system. It'd be a five-year contract on their hosted voice-over IP system. It's what we call a turnkey solution. Basically, it's installed, they provide all the service, take care of everything, if there's upgrades to the system, they take care of that for the contract period. And they would, along the way, obviously, replace all the public address systems and then tie them directly into the phone system. This would, some of you, we move forward with, it's a summer 2014 project installation, it would come out of next year's budget. Questions you guys have?
I'll make a statement that this was presented to us at the finance committee, and all three of the members, myself, Stephanie, and TJ, who's not here, did agree with your recommendation to go with TDS. And we had questions at that time, and you sufficiently answered them.
I apologize for all the information. I tried to pare a lot of stuff down, the bids were huge, they were upwards of 200 pages apiece, spent a lot of late-night reading, and we tried to pare everything down to just the essentials, and we gave you an overall budget there and everything, gave their detailed budget for TDS, our recommended vendor, kind of stuff.
So why did you choose TDS over the other company that I don't remember what it is?
Two things, the...
ESG.
Yeah, ESG was the other one. The fact that they provide all the service and upgrades to this, basically, it's for the term of the contract, we don't have to worry about that, and that's, that was a big selling point for us, that, again, they call it turnkey, it's kind of the, the industry term for it, but we're not touching that. And the other system, once we got out of a three-year contract with them, so let's say we were in year five, and there was a huge major server upgrade, that's on us, unless we have a service plan with them, that we then have to add into the cost annually. And there's different levels, we actually asked them, they came back, it was anywhere from 900 to $12,000 a year, depending on what kind of service. So if we wanted a service plan where they took care of everything, they call it the gold package type thing, that was over 12,000 a year. That really added into the cost and everything, because we did some projections you had there of a five and a 10-year total cost of ownership, but the one part that was missing there was, what happens if we want a service plan in years six, seven, eight, nine with, you know, the other company? That was a big, big divider for us.
Okay.
Let me just ask a couple of questions. The total cost, we have an operating cost monthly, and then we have an equipment cost.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Can you pop that up to, can you see it? This is what you're looking at?
Yeah. It appears to me our fixed costs, which is mostly equipment, and then there's a paging system, which is equipment.
Yes.
So ranges from roughly 250, roughly 235 to 250. And then ESG has upfront costs and additional 164.
Correct.
Which all they're doing is, is prepaying what looks like their monthly fee.
It's not.
It isn't.
It's different. So the two systems are fundamentally and technologically different. ESG system, we own it, it's called on-premise. Basically, think big boxes of servers down in the wiring room, and we own that equipment. When we do it, that's why we have such a big upfront cost. The equipment cost is much larger in that respect. Best thing to do, it's, it's a, you're going to buy a car. Are you going to lease it, or are you going to own it? That's really what this is. And so in TDS's model, it's called hosted. Most of the stuff, the server, the backend, all the infrastructure stuff, is down at their server farm, it's not here on-site. And so we're kind of leasing the service, we're getting everything as a service provided to us, wherein the other one, basically, we pay for it upfront, we own the equipment, and then we go out to AT&amp;T or Time Warner, they're basically the only two providers around here, just think of the old Ma Bell, you know, phone bill to get at home. And we would pay them then to make that connection. With TDS, we're basically leasing their service, renting it, whatever term you want to use. That's why you have the higher monthly fee, but then they take care of everything, and again, all the equipment's on them too, because it's on their premises, and they take care of and maintain it.
And what do you mean by a 40% E-rate?
We get E-rate funding through the federal government, which is for connections generally. For us, we pay, like our Time Warner internet bill that we pay each month, we get somewhere between 40 and 50% off. Now, I'm estimating to the board conservatively right now, because Whitnall's on a bubble, and we alternate back and forth, literally by just a few kids every year. So this year, we happen to be at 50% E-rate, eh, but we can't look a year or two down the road and know that we're going to have that. 40% is a better conservative estimate there, because literally, if we have four or five kids that are on free and reduced lunch, leave our district, we now drop that 10%. And so for us, you know, I want to give you the conservative estimate on what this would cost. And so what that does is, it knocks down those what are called tier-one monthly fees. Right now, our AT&amp;T phone bill we have in our traditional system right now, we get 50% off this year off those monthly bills. Now, TDS's system has gotten rated by the FCC as a tier-one system, which means that we can E-rate that monthly cost. So, but I'm giving you the E-rated costs up there, they're actually higher than that monthly. Those are the E-rated versions.
So I, I caution the board, because I'm sure many of you looked at, or look at 10-year cost, TDS 635 roughly versus 582, what you really need to do is present value, that income stream or that monthly fee over that 10-year period to really compare properly. Because that upfront cost with ESG is money out of our pocket immediately.
Correct.
Whereas with TDS, we're spreading it over a 10-year term.
And that was another one, you know, when Nancy asked the question, we're looking at all these projects that are coming down for this next budget year, and there's some major capital projects. This one allowed us to spread that cost out over time.
Right.
Where ESG's was a major upfront cost. I mean, we would be literally looking at how, how do we fund this to the tune of several hundred thousand dollars right upfront.
Have you, and have you gotten referrals from anybody, any other?
We did, we called, they gave us a laundry list of references, and what I did is, I called the other school districts that they had on there, I didn't necessarily care about the businesses, if you'd like me to call them, I can. Got glowing recommendations, Monticello is the closest one that they have current right now, talk to their tech director, they're happy, they've had no problems, so no service outages or anything like that, which is really what we were looking for. We want to know if there's been downtimes.
Okay.
Any other questions for me on this? Any questions for TDS?
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming.
Thank you very much for that, too.
Good, move on, thank you. Okay, I guess Lowell, you're going to substitute to the best of your ability for Tony, who is...
Yes, I will.
Stuck in sunny Phoenix, but for, for Tony.
And before I get into that, I do have to compliment Eric on the amount of time he put into this, the phone thing, because he drove Kathy, me, and Doug crazy, because on Friday night, he'd say, here's the numbers, then Saturday morning, whoa, whoa, wait, I got these, and then Sunday, and then Doug and I are going to, we get our, we get our little adding machines out, and we're trying to compare the numbers, making sure they're going straight. So he put in a ton of time, and I appreciate his effort, just wanted to say that publicly.
Were you talking about the upset secretaries?
Secretaries? You had he and I going. Anyway, on to the instructional support staffing. We talked about this at the admin team meeting, I know it came to you in admin team meeting notes, and then in this formal present, or not presentation, but the report that Tony had in the board packet. But just to highlight one or two things, starting with that first paragraph, it's, the request is to support the curricular instructional support personnel. In other words, this is a request to support what the teachers are doing in the classroom. He talks about the PLC, the shared personal practice, this is going to be a big part of educator effectiveness, and in that second paragraph, he talks about the teachers working with each other and their student data through continuous interaction observation. So we need the teachers to have time to be able to observe what the other teacher is doing, analyzing the data, so that if, like Quinn, Stephanie, and I are English teachers, and we have a common assessment, and my kids just flounder, they don't do well at all. Stephanie's do pretty well, and Quinn's practically ace it. Well, then we better go find out what Quinn is doing. So we sit down and we'll analyze the data, and then these people will sometimes free up time for like Stephanie and I to go watch that other class and see what they did different to improve the educational process. In that third paragraph down, that's the specific request for full-time instructional effectiveness coaches and for K-12 curriculum coordinators. You've already approved the curriculum coordinators, but just in the core areas, this is adding in those areas that it talks about. The last paragraph on this page talks about that educator effectiveness, and that is a requirement, we have to do it. Thankfully, we did, we, we wrote a grant between our district, Greenfield, Greendale, and so we're, the, the training part, that's going to be covered by the grant. We, the educator effectiveness process of setting SLOs and PPGs, and I hate acronyms, so I made sure I wrote it out, the professional practice goal, that's the individual teachers, you know, what, what's their professional practice goals? And then for teachers in the educator effectiveness model, it's the student learning objectives, and when we're evaluating the principals, it's going to be the school learning objectives. So each, they're supposed to identify two, and they're evaluated by it, and 50% of it right now is based on the student performance. The beginning of the, the next paragraph where it starts with K-12 curriculum, that's where I said they're already in place for English, math, science, and social studies. We're adding them for the other courses as well, so that they have those leadership roles. And then the specific training, and this is kind of like when you're talking with Eric about why is this so important now? We don't want to come into... We don't want to come into board meetings and saying, we need a decision right this second kind of thing. Because that's uncomfortable for board members, it's uncomfortable for us even to ask for it. But we do have to set up the training and it's required in July and August. And that's where the training is going to be co-written and received by, well, by the grant. And that's Whitwell, Greenfield, and Greendale. And then the part in bold, that's the superintendent part, right? If you're following our admin meetings, when we're doing our staffing, we want to do staffing as much as humanly possible without any additional money. So, you know, what can you repurpose? Where can you get the funding to pay for what's happening here? And with that, that was that spreadsheet Tony gave you, but I gave you a colored version right before the board meeting.
Is that the correct note one? No, the one you passed out?
Yes.
The one that has red on it?
Just double-checking with-
Is the number though?
No, I printed off the old, hold on, sorry. Doug luckily, and he was the one who's going to take the spreadsheet. But are you comfortable explaining it or you want me to?
Go ahead.
Take one and pass it down.
This is the one I have.
Does the bottom line should say four sixty-two fifty?
All right, that's the current one. The board package.
Is that what I gave you?
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right. And then I want you to notice that I gave you the nice colored version. Doug's was going to be black and white. So looking at the colored version, Doug, can you explain it to him a little bit? He and Tony worked on this together. To agree.
Tony was looking at how to reallocate funds by making some changes in the scheduling for people next year. You can see that he's got one hundred and eighty-two days for this year, one hundred and eighty for next year. We worked out what the, some of the costs would be on a daily basis. For example, teacher aides, busing, food service. And subtracting this, or next year's from this year, produce the difference column. Down, oh, about halfway down the page, there's a line that says total is two hundred and sixty-four thousand. That's a result of, if you look at the total hours right above there, that's sixty times the staff hour, per hour cost of four thousand four hundred dollars. That gives two hundred and sixty-four thousand. If you move over a couple of columns to the right, you'll see the same math, only it's ninety-six hours this time. Produces four hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred. Difference between the two of those is the one hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred dollars. So he has a total reallocation of roughly two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And then shows you at the bottom, the instructional effectiveness coaches, the data analysis position and the K-12 coordinators would be taken out. They would offset that two hundred and seventy-nine thousand four sixty-two with about a four hundred and sixty-two dollar net for the district. Basically, it's a wash.
And the only other comment I have on it was Eileen had asked about that data analysis and where we kept it as a placeholder, because she doesn't remember doing it. So I told them to add it in here so you could see, even if, whether you use the ninety, whatever it was we had for a placeholder this year minus what we took off for the communication coordinator, I just told them to put it in there so you'd see what it would look like. We don't have any plan right now to add this in because he's not sure we're absolutely going to need that position. But he wanted, so that people are aware we're looking at it. If we can get our effectiveness coaches in our instructional, that's part of, that'll be part of their role as well, the data analysis. Because when I read that, this part of the report that Tony wrote out, they do a lot of work with the data, so we're not sure we would even need all of it. But we don't want it to slip slide away totally until we're positive it can slip slide away. And that's the start of a song.
Who wants to ask the first questions on this?
Well, Eileen emailed me with a few questions. One question I had was with the early release aids for collaborative release, wouldn't those aids have been on the clock anyways?
I wish she could email me, Lowell, so I can research them before. And it'd be a lot easier.
Instructional aids don't, so if we would have had, like at the high school, if we would have had early releases instead of late starts, they wouldn't have, they would have gone home. But we're paying them at the elementary, middle school level to cover the kids that stay.
I think she, right, she's talking about the two hours per day. So because of early release, we pay additionally two hours to the aids?
No, you would have, if they, if we wouldn't have offered the care, we wouldn't have been paying them.
Okay.
And by having the full days instead of the early release, they wouldn't necessarily be at school those days, that's what that costing.
Okay. And she said, of the four full-time instructional effectiveness coaches, the analysis given, does that include salary and benefits or just salary?
That two fifteen should be the salary and benefits. Because the, six, twelve, eighteen, twenty. A new teacher's salary is roughly thirty-five and then fifteen for benefits. So it's, you're estimating based on who you're going to hire. But irregardless, we would probably move more experienced teachers into this. But when you move them, you'd probably pull in the first-year teachers then. That's where he's costing it.
And then the twenty percent reduce, reduction in workload, who's that being picked up by? For the coordinators?
Jack, can you do that scheduling? Can you?
It speaks to that the four, K to twelve coordinators are going to have not only a stipend, but a twenty percent reduction in workload? Have you figured in who's going to pick it up and where's that cost coming from?
No, at this point, we haven't determined where those positions would be. So, you know, it kind of depends. Like at the high school level, we schedule other teachers to cover, you know, those sections. So, for example, next year in science, you know, as they work the plan, I know that Laura Silette is only teaching four sections, not five sections. And, you know, maybe staff appropriately.
So are those staff already in place? Are there going to be, is there going to be additional staff needed to pick that load up?
No, there will be additional staff.
Okay. And just a comment is, I hope we don't need the district data analysis, because this is a real good point that I spoke before, that sixty or seventy thousand dollars in savings could go real geist to help us pay for our iPads.
Well, the district data analysis position, you're saying?
Mm-hmm. Hopefully it can be picked up through principals or administration or who you speak of that we don't need this position and we use that money. To bring down a class of other initiatives that we like.
As opposed to following the recommendations of four full-time instructional effectiveness coaches and four K-12 curriculum coordinators?
Well, I'm, you know, I'm a, we're not voting on this tonight and I want to talk to some people about the instructional effectiveness coaches. By what Tony wrote, it certainly seems that they are needed. And you said by law we have to have them?
No, educator effectiveness is required. That's a-
Right.
-by law. And the educator effectiveness always talks about the coaches that are involved in the process. Like, it's, one of the, they always call it an unfunded mandate. It's a mandate, something we must do, but they aren't giving us money to do it. There are, although we did jump on the grants early to see what we could get, both individually, that initial, pretty much as soon as I committed to DPI, we got grant, which was, I don't know, maybe five, six months ago. I won't let the board know about that one. And then the one that Tony and, I believe Lisa and somebody from Greendale worked on.
But that's just for training?
Yeah.
Not for the actual cost of the employee?
Correct. It's rare for grants to cover cost of people. Usually it's training or stuff.
I mean, I guess the question I have, I don't know if we need four K-12 curriculum coordinators. I have no idea if that's an accurate number or not. I have no basis for comparison. So maybe it is, maybe it's not enough, I don't know. But, so, which kind of, you know, if we don't need four, well, then, you know, maybe we only need three. Which time, you know, we can free up some dollars like Quinn suggested.
I was talking to Mr. Gullickson this past week at my daughter's volleyball game and I asked him, not knowing this was on here, but I asked him about a few things. And one of the things that he really said, and he was very excited, was that Ms. Silette is the K-12 coordinator above him, or he's in science. And he just said, he couldn't say enough nice things about how that has worked to help him with his students. And he thought it was a very good position to have. That's the coordinator. So we're expanding it to the other, other curricula.
So that's a, I just, I don't know. Go ahead, Lowell.
I just think this is a good direction to go in. I would like to see it tied to our goals. And that's where, I think as a board, we'd feel better knowing that we have at least some way of looking at these. Because I know that investing in our teacher professional development is the best investment that we can make if we want to achieve higher results for our kids. So this is the way to go. So I think, you know, who's best to determine how many we need? That's our administration's job. So I'm comfortable with that. I do agree with looking at, with the concerns about the data analysis position. Clearly, the whole idea of educator effectiveness is getting to more accountability. More accountability and better teacher practices and the controversial of linking teacher, teacher practice to student learning outcomes. And I really, I like the direction we're going in. I hope that we as a board really can set a positive tone around that. It's not meant to be punitive. It's totally meant to support our students. So we still, as a board, have to be accountable for those dollars and for the results. So I'm always looking at, you know, this is great stuff. I know what Tony's doing in our buildings and I know what our principals are doing. They're really getting better results for kids. We're so focused on that. And as was mentioned earlier, the mission of our district, which we also heard a lot in the listening sessions, is the ability to almost customize every experience for every student individually. It really takes a lot of training on the teacher's part to change a practice in the classroom. So I, I think it's great too that they've looked at reallocating dollars to make this work. But like Quinn said, we have other needs as well. So the more that we can hone in on those skills, you know, we need data. We need to be able to analyze data. So maybe picking people that have that expertise already to be these instructional coaches will really help. That'll really help.
As I'm looking at this, I'm not sure it's, it hasn't been necessary in the past with this board to have a placeholder, really. If we need a position, we come, explain the, the reasoning behind the position and, you know, if it's something that the board agrees is worthwhile, we move forward with it. But that's, that's the call of the finance committee or whoever, when we do the budget, if we want to hold that open. Because we really don't have a proposal out there right now for any kind of data analysis. So, you know, when we do the budget, you know, we're putting it together, we might not need to actually put it there. Because if it's something we need in the future, we'll come to the board and say, this is what we need and we'll come up with a way to possibly try to finance it. Does that make sense?
I do have one more question. About these goals, you said that the teachers will have student learning outcomes and the principals will have building outcomes.
School, yeah.
Is this going to be aligned then to our district goals somehow? Or how do you see that, how do you see that working?
Yeah, one, well, we were going to, there's an alignment, obviously, we just never drew the line between this and higher student achievement. Most of our district goals, which you're also going to hear about again in two weeks, are going to, we're going to say where we are in increasing that student achievement. And that was one of the driving factors that when I was first interviewed by the board, they said, how are you going to increase student achievement? You know, so, and the board's been extremely supportive if we give a rational argument for something to increase the achievement. So we will try to draw a line between the two and only make it more clear. Right now, it's kind of like a string. It'd be nice if it was a little bit more of a pathway between the two. And as we develop the goals for the following year, it'll be nice because you'll start to understand, and all of us, every single teacher, they just sent out an update today. DPI is designing this as they drive it. You know, it's like building the bridge as you're crossing it kind of thing, like the Army Corps of Engineers can, but the rest of us have a hard time doing that. So it's, it's a, it's an evolving system and set of requirements.
But it is all research-based?
Yes.
That's not new?
No.
Putting it in statewide, isn't it?
Yeah. And making it a requirement, yes.
If the data position, if the money spent towards a data position frees up a coordinator's or a teacher's time to spend more time on plans with kids or more time in actual student contact, then it might be money well spent. Because there's nothing that frustrates me more than seeing a classroom teacher have to run out and make photocopies and not be working on stuff with the actual kids. So if, if that's the result of having a data position, I'd like to know that. If, you know, if that's going to enhance the plan in time with students, that would, that would be something worth considering. But we do seem to be adding incrementally a lot of costs to next year and the year after. And I would hate to put us in a position where we're not sustainable. And I wonder if we're starting to edge close to that because we're looking at adding these little bit here, a little bit here, and we're doing it in isolation. We're not looking at the big picture of what's being added. And that's a, that's a cross-concern.
I totally disagree that we're not looking at the big picture. We came together as, I mean, we started with simplistic notes that are on the board over there, like aligning six-twelve schedules, aligning K-five schedules. Talked about our goals. Instructional coaches, cost neutral. We, as a whole district, are looking at, what do we need here? How much does Dennis get away with over there?
I meant we as a board.
Okay.
Not as an admin team. I meant we as a board.
Yeah, maybe we need to do a better job of reporting to you guys.
When things are coming to us, we're looking at it in isolation.
Okay, I got you.
We're being asked for a position here. We've got another program over here. We've got one-to-one additional costs over here. And so it's easy to lose track as to how much overall we are adding as a board.
People-wise, not dollar-wise necessarily.
Well, both. So that's not what the administration team is, isn't really doing, it's us as a board. It's sometimes hard for us to see how much we've added over time and how big it's getting. So that's a concern I have.
Okay. Anything else on instructional support staffing? Okay, I guess, David, you up for the district and elementary district and community-wide communications plan?
So, this is weird being in this spot.
Welcome.
No, one of the district goals that was set before my time was to improve communications within the district. And part of that was hiring this position. And the other part of it is constructing a communications plan. That process has started, as you saw, the very preliminary draft that was- That process has started, as you saw, the very preliminary draft that was included in your board packet tonight. The plan really is focused on six key areas that have been identified, again, prior to my coming on board, and also as far as, they've been emphasized through discussions with board members, administration, and just about anyone I talk to when it comes to how they feel, what communicates with its stakeholders. Those six areas, as I think are in the coverage sheets, are how the district uses its website to communicate with its stakeholders, the way that we utilize social media, how, or improving our media relations and securing media placements, our internal communications, you know, that's administration to staff, staff to staff, and those types of things. I kind of split out another group of external communication vehicles, because social media and our website is, are two different external vehicles, but there are a lot of other ways that we use to get messages out to people. And finally, but not least important, is our crisis communications and how we handle those types of situations. The reason I'm here pretty much tonight is just to tell you that we are moving forward with that goal. I know that's a goal, I'm not exactly sure when that goal is supposed to be met, but we are in the process of getting to that point and meeting that goal. And I guess really, indirectly, I guess I'm here to kind of give you an update as to some of the things that I've been doing over the last several months now, I guess it's almost four months, maybe, since I bought, four months. So, so you have, you all have a draft, again, that draft is very preliminary, has not been viewed by the entire administration team at all, so there is certainly room for input from both the board and the, and the administration team, like I said. If there's any, I was told to keep it real short, so if you have any questions about anything that's in there, or if you have any questions about anything that's been going on from my desk, I'd be happy to answer any of those questions.
This is somewhat of a job description?
Communications plan, no, not at all, it's actually, it is our plan that can be presented to the board and then ultimately the public as to how we are going to, or how we are going to try to communicate all the key messages to the stakeholders that need to get those messages. Again, there's, we utilize a lot of different vehicles to get those messages out to people, but I don't know that everyone understands the process as to how we do that, or why we choose to do it the way we do it. The plan is kind of an explanation as to some of the things we do. The plan also has some goals in it. One thing I should note about the goals is that there are a lot of things that probably could have been in the plan as goals, but we've already tackled them in the first couple of months that I've been here, such as starting a Twitter account and utilizing social media more. I think those could have easily been goals that we would've had in the plan, but instead of waiting to add them to the plan or writing a plan first and then, and then tackling goals, we started to tackle some goals right off the bat. So, yeah, definitely not job description, more of a, what we do as a district to communicate.
One of the, at the beginning, way before we even dreamed of having a wonderful person like David standing in front of us when we first did our goals, we said, we talked about the need to do a communication plan, a district communication plan. We, every year, we're saying, let's do a better job of communication, and every year we should be saying, what can we do better to communicate what we're doing, what our strengths are, what our weaknesses are. And then, prior to his being hired, I kind of did a, in the cover sheet, a brief outline of what areas you'd want in that communication plan, and then I used that when I rolled over and said, this is why it would be really valuable for us to have a communication coordinator slash public relations person. And that's when the board agreed with, with that position, and then that's when I took that outline and I said, here you go, David. And he did a really nice job of pulling it together into the, that communication plan format. What we haven't done yet, and because we wanted to start some of the goals where we are with those, so that when we come to you in two weeks, we didn't have a four-hour meeting, you know, it's old business, but this is a progress report, and we'll have people there that will just say, yep, this is what we did and this is where we are, so it'll be a lot shorter. But this was something new and initial, and we wanted to have it in your hands for a couple of weeks, so if you have questions or suggestions for improvement, you email it to Dave or me, and we will cover it as well in our admin meetings over the next couple of weeks and vet it through that way as well. It's kind of like a handbook, we typically, I mean, the board would just, it's not a policy, it's not, it's just a, the district's plan, and then the board would say, yeah, it's a good plan, I would hope.
Luanne, you had a, your hand?
Yeah, that's kind of what I was wondering is, I've seen tremendous improvements, and I don't have kids in the system, so that's helpful, because that's the group we really need to get to, people like me now, because I'm on the board, but if all, all I did was, you know, like you on Facebook, and now I get messages in almost every day, I know one of them's going to be from Whitnall. It's amazing how much stuff is going on in this district that I did not know about. And then I also really like your brief updates to the board once in a while about all the media stuff that's been out there. That's been really helpful. I, I just think, I think it's a challenge, because we don't have a local newspaper, and now we're split, and sometimes I don't get what Nancy gets, because she lives on the other side of the street, you know, because Greenfield gets a little different now than Whitnall does. So our challenge of getting the right information out to people that's timely and correct is still there, even though you've got all of this stuff in this plan. I still think building our little database through forward thinking of, of other, you know, stronger connections is going to really be helpful.
I think I've, what I learned in this position early on is that we really needed our, kind of like our own printing press, and that's kind of what we've become, because the newspaper, like you said, is sporadic with Whitnall coverage, and that's the only paper that we have. And like you said, there are two different papers, so that sometimes one story doesn't get into the other version, the Midwest version. So that's kind of, I think, that's definitely been a goal of ours, is to use the website and use social media and use the blogs that we use and that sort of thing to get more information out to people that they wouldn't get otherwise.
All of us have probably, one time or another, got a call from Jane from the Greenfield now. I got one last week regarding what I would consider to be misinformation and misinterpretation of the capital improvements that, you know, we've been discussing at a fairly high level at the finance committee meetings. How important is it to you to have those types of, you know, when we get the calls, to, you know, funnel them to you, say, you know, Jane, why don't you call Dave, he's our communications director, public relations individual, so that the message that we send back out is consistent?
Ultimately, that's what happened, too. I did speak with Jane, and I know Dr. Holtz did, too, so the two of us did speak with her.
Because I referred her to you.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it is important that we get out the right message, certainly, because misinformation can be very damaging, and it's hard to correct that once it's out there.
Right.
You know, the paper might run a correction, but it's a one-line sentence that is on the front, or buried somewhere in the paper that no one's going to see. So it is important to get the right message out. I don't know that I, there's a lot of different philosophies on that. I, I believe it's okay to have more than just one voice come out of the district, and that, for me, that goes, you know, down to the school level. I mean, it's okay for, in my perspective, or my, the way I view things, I think it's okay for teachers to, you know, have a voice with the media when, when it's inappropriate, when the timing is appropriate. The school board obviously is going to have a huge say in, in, as to what happens with facilities down the line. So for someone to ask you your opinion, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, but I do appreciate the idea that some of those things do get funneled through me or Dr. Holtz, or, or sent my way before, before it does get talked about, because, and like I said, it's just important to stress the accurate information and the points that, that we want to get across, because, again, because the coverage is somewhat sporadic, we only get, sometimes only get one shot at telling the right story. So I do appreciate when things do get funneled my way. It isn't something that we've talked about as a team, as far as if every story has to get funneled that way through, through me. I would think that the plan will reflect that once we start having more discussions during our administration team meetings as to what everyone is completely comfortable with, or what everyone, you know, feels is the best viewed, you know, or the best way to tackle those things.
One way maybe to handle it is, is if we do make comments to the media, is maybe preface the comments, saying, this is my personal position, not necessarily the position of the board or the district.
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, and again, because then if you say something that's inaccurate, then you would be held accountable, and it wouldn't be, you know, a district point of view, it'd be your point of view.
Right.
So that's certainly one thing. There's a lot of different ways to handle it, and again, I think we're, the plan will at some point reflect the best ways and the best practices for, for this district.
Since you're bringing that up, I think under the crisis, management communications, which you'll probably, that you should look at our, I don't know if it's in our policies or, or if it's in a handbook or somewhere, but it should be really clear that under crisis, our board president is the only, or superintendent, we should not.
There is a policy.
There's a policy on that, so that, I don't know that that aligns with what you have here, you might want to just double check that.
Yeah, that's the one piece that, it was, it was, it's not near complete yet.
Right, that, that will need a little more clarification.
I think part of the challenge is, especially when you're talking about crisis communications, that it's hard to put into words every crisis that could happen. But I do understand what you're saying.
But the protocol, you could make it really clear, the board members should refer all comments to the board president or the superintendent. We should never make comments during a crisis. I think, I think anyway.
And that's in our crisis, we also have a crisis communication document that you guys have, which Matt has worked on a lot in the past, and all of us as administrators have.
Anything else?
Good job.
Thank you, David. Okay, moving along to comments from the school board regarding agenda items for future consideration. And we'll discuss our action. We have a list of things that we are chipping away at, and we'll continue to do that. Does anybody have anything else they want to add to that? Okay, in that case, we'll go to board member announcements. Everybody have anything you want to announce?
Just a brief reminder, we have a fabulous musical coming up at the high school. Tickets are actually available online this year, so don't be afraid to go online and purchase your tickets, they will still be available at the door, but Grease is shaping up to be quite a production, should be another good one.
And related to that, I think the senior dinner is March nineteenth. Do you have enough volunteers, or you need waiters and waitresses?
The National Arts Society students are coming in like usual to help us out with some serving, and we've had some staff members volunteer their time, and as always, board members are all welcome.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Anybody have anything else, or anyone else?
I just had a comment, with the amount of information that we were given in our board packet today, it'd be much appreciated if we could really get that out by Thursday. I have two very active kids, and when I, by the time I get home, I work on Friday, I looked at, and if, a lot of the information, if it wouldn't have been at the finance committee meeting, all the information that Doug had given, it had been way too much to get done. So it's really important to give the information to us as soon as possible.
All right, we have candidates for them tomorrow in this room at seven o'clock. And one other item, and I forgot the exact date, May third or sixth, there's a one-day board education session, of all places, it's always at the Dells for some reason, I don't know, it must be.
May third.
It's May third, is it? Yeah, it's a one-day session, if you haven't seen it, we'll catch you up the invite. Looks like a pretty good session, it normally is, it has five or six agenda items.
The Spring Academy.
Spring Academy.
How many dates, aren't there for new board member orientation already, too? We should look into that for our candidates.
This particular one, they, they actually recommend it for new board candidates.
New candidates, on your calendar.
Yeah. Anything else? Is your hand up, Stephanie, or you? If not, I'll need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all clear, say aye.
Aye.